All right, it is nine. Actually, it's 9:02. We'll call this meeting to order.
Roll call for the City Council Meeting of Wednesday, February 5th, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. Vice President Titus, Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Troop. Councilmember Witherspoon is absent.
At this time, we will stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilor Brzezinski.
Chair Titus.
Yes.
Just wanted to mention the family of Leon Hooks who passed away in between our last meeting. He was like a really big activist in the community. He also had a drill team which he had in the eighties and nineties. Worked with thousands of youth and I think they did a tribute to him at his funeral recently. So just want to say that. Rest in peace.
Thank you.
And obviously, our boy Mel is a little under the weather, so a moment of silence for him too.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes from the January 22nd meeting and bills for payment on February 7th and 14th. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schoff, Troop, Titus.
All right, at this point, we would go into presentations, but we have no presentations this morning, which will lead us into the request for repository sales. Is there anyone here to speak on repository sale? Is there anyone here to speak on a repository sale? Is there anyone here to speak on a repository sale? Seeing none, we will move into public comment. If you are here for a public comment, we ask that you please clearly state your name and your municipality for the record. You will have five minutes, and at the end of that five minutes, well, not me being rude, but I'll let you know that your time is up. If you could line up on the left your right, that would be great. If media, we don't have media here, but they would line up on the opposite side. So again, just please clearly state your name and municipality for the record.
Liz Allen, city of Erie. I'm glad to see I wore the uniform today. We didn't consult in advance. Lori asked me if I was doing a presentation and I said, "No, but coincidentally, I'm going to talk about presentations." I'm here today to implore you to use your regular city council meetings to educate Erie residents about the unethical, illegal, and autocratic actions of de facto U.S. President Elon Musk and actual dictator Donald Trump. What they are doing, one anointed, one elected, is hurting Erie people and threatening our economy. Dr. Titus Tyler has already spoken about the dangers to the LGBTQ+ community under the Trump regime. My suggestion is to invite other Erie experts to speak during the presentation portion of your agenda to educate the public about how the Trump administration's budget priorities and radical executive orders are directly harming Erie residents, especially those who are most vulnerable. Ask the heads of authorities, EMTA, the Erie Housing Authority, the Erie Redevelopment Authority to start, to discuss how much federal funding they depend on to deliver vital services. Ask the executives from Erie Insurance, our largest employer, to talk about how possible changes to the HB1 visas might disrupt their operations. Now, you may not know that there is a fight within this regime about those HB1 visas. Elon Musk wants them to continue. Steve Bannon and his ilk want only no one to be able to immigrate here to work. Ask university representatives to explain how much of their enrollment depends on foreign students. Ask the union leaders and managers from Wabtec about what will happen if tariffs on Canada go into effect after the 30-day pause. You know, Wabtec repairs locomotives from Canadian National Railroad. Ask the chief executive of the Barber National Institute and the head of special ed for the Erie School District how services for those with intellectual disabilities will fare when the U.S. Department of Education is demolished. You all have expertise. You have a wide audience. Amplify those voices, broaden the scope of how information is shared. If you organize short, fact-filled presentations at the top of Erie City Council meetings during presentations, you can have a wide, direct impact, including on the red hat instructors who fill your council chambers. Catch their attention at the beginning of the council meeting rather than waiting until committee reports when many of those attendees are already gone. I really think it's important that people across the political spectrum understand how they're going to be impacted by all of these actions. I'm rereading a short book by Yale historian Timothy Snyder on tyranny, Twenty Lessons from the 20th Century. Lesson number eight is this: Stand out. Someone has to. It is easy to follow along. It can feel strange to do or say something different. But without that unease, there is no freedom. Remember Rosa Parks. The moment you set an example, the spell of the status quo is broken, and others will follow. Set an example. Break the spell of the status quo. People in Erie are, at heart, kind and generous. They will understand the stakes. They will be alarmed at the consequences. They will be empowered to stand up to tyranny because of you. And I scratched some other stuff on here. How am I doing, Titus, on time?
To get the timer in front of me.
Okay.
One minute.
Okay. Thanks to Mayor Schember for speaking out in support of refugees and immigrants. I think we are at a pandemic-level response moment here in the country and in Erie. We need daily press conferences to draw attention to what's happening. Today, it's Noah that's being dismantled. Noah. We had a, what, 38-inch snowstorm the day after Thanksgiving. They're going to dismantle Noah. Yesterday, it was OSHA. Look up and see how many industrial accidents we've had in Erie. I'm happy to do that. But thanks to Mayor Schember, we need that response every day. Drill down. Drill in what's happening. Thank you.
Good morning. Erin Meisner, city of Erie. It is terrifying to be a trans person in the United States right now. The president has signed many executive orders specifically targeting the trans community. From removing trans people from the military because they are not selfless and humble enough to serve, to defining gender as only male and female, which is biologically inaccurate, transgender people are under attack at the federal level. Legal adults are being denied medical care. We can't even use the correct bathroom in many places, including on Capitol Hill. Making up less than 2% of the population of the United States, I'm rarer as a trans person than I am as a redhead. While this is simply a distraction for the power the executive branch is currently consolidating, the net effect is that trans people are being targeted and erased from society, legislated literally out of existence. However, Erie feels like a haven from those executive orders. In 2023, Erie City Council, including several of you who are on council today, voted to destine the city of Erie as an LGBTQ sanctuary city. To the mayor's office, your initiatives were instrumental in the city receiving perfect scores in 2023 and 2024 on the Human Rights Campaign MEI, acknowledging the city's commitment to equality, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Today, I'm offering heartfelt gratitude to the city's elected officials for the protections offered to the LGBT community and residents like me. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking.
Hello, my name's Brandon Penn. I'm from city of Erie. I'm here to talk today about the housing crisis and tenant education. I've been a part of a few different meetings where this seems to be a focal point of a lot of our residents. And one thing that I believe as a landlord is seriously lacking is tenant education on how to be a good tenant so they don't get evicted. The fact of the matter is, no landlord wants to evict their tenant. Like, we don't just go around, we don't get kicks for that. We're a business. So if we have to evict someone, it costs us money. There's vacancies, there's repairs. We don't want to do it. What I think we need is, you know, the city to, the government, to step in because we have some great agencies that are already doing things to help. But if we could create a city organization that had a program to teach tenants, you know, the importance of paying rent on time, what they are supposed to be doing, tenant responsibilities as far as taking care of the apartment, making sure things aren't getting destroyed, you know, how their company is also their responsibility, as well as their rights as well. You know, a lot of folks don't know the blatant rights that they have that a lot of people take for granted that everybody knows. I believe a program that would allow for rental assistance, you know, whether it be first month and security or just a one-month rent would be a good way to entice some folks to get into that. I would be happy to work with anybody on city council and the government or in the community to build such an organization and would be happy to help teach that program. But that's pretty much why I'm here today. I think that's something that's seriously lacking. And it's become an us-versus-them mentality. You know, landlords, I hear it in the association all the time, you know, they're tired of tenants, you know, they have animosity towards their tenants, tenants have animosity towards their landlords. And the fact of the matter is, we need each other. You know, we're consumers and suppliers. So if we don't have the consumer to buy our supply, you know, we're out of a job. If they don't have supplies to purchase, they're out of a home. So one of the biggest issues that I see is not necessarily, I do know there's a housing shortage, but it's a lot of applications I get, I have to decline because they have evictions. They have, you know, criminal history that's, you know, three pages long. There's, if we could get to people before they have their first eviction, it would set them off for success in the future. So that's all I wanted to talk about. My number is on the call sheets, so if anybody wants to reach out to me, I'd be happy to talk with you. Text is best way to reach me. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Michael. I'm here on the behalf of the Upper Room. I am like a security guard. I am a protector of a Catholic community church. I'm here to argue on the behalf that we need things for the Catholic community and that church over there, for the people to sit and be more comfortable where I'm from. I've been there working with the people for 13 years. I don't even receive an income over there. The people over there, I'm willing to work for free for them. And I loved working for them for 13 years over there. But I'm here on the behalf of arguing about that we need a front fence for the place to be more secure and a back fence in the backyard to be more secure. I need more of staff members that could help me and not help the other ones that was like, like, just that got up there. But me, myself in general, they went overlooked over me and I was up there the whole time for 13 years. I was raised there with Matthew and James and Daniel. Daniel in jail right now because he had to handle some things for the homeless community, but nobody didn't bail him out. So he's there. But he did look, he did like look out for the half of the community. He didn't get hired, but he's sitting in jail right now on probation because one of the homeless people decided to argue with my brother Daniel and he bricked him in the back of his head. Was it Daniel's fault? Might. It might have been the other person's fault. But I need people to help me more up there, meaning I did perfect as a staff member up there. I just ain't never get paid over, all I did was just protect and serve there. Like, and we need new paint on the church and the inside of the church, the floors need to be clean and the walls need to be repainted. And we need more donations up there. And if you could help, I could be more like important to the city of ours. I could be like more in the clear. But other than that, you don't want Michael the Archangel to get shoved under there and nobody never notice it there. So if you could help me get things for the community and help me get hired up there for they can have a script of a Catholic community, we could be clear. And we could be all we could be, like we always supposed to be there. Thanks to city council member Nelson for raising me up all of them years. I turned out to be a good kid. But now it's like, I gotta keep this mask on and not put my life at risk. So if you could help me like tighten up myself so I could be sharp and tight for the Catholic community and Father B and Sister Sisters and St. Joseph and more, I would do anything for all of y'all on this floor. So thank you. That's all my argument was. But I will be front of the church like I all the way was, every day at 8:00 until 7:00. And then I clean all the way up. I clean up in the morning, I clean up during the nights. That church is nice when I get done. But it's people that runs around me that don't like my things that I do for the church so they go around me and mess it up more. Well, I need more security and staff for me and not the ones that just hired there. I was there before. Thank you.
Appreciate you, Michael.
Good morning, Council. Carly Anderson, 3830 Parade Boulevard in the city of Erie. Here this morning to congratulate members of council who were correct and courageous the last council meeting in the vote that you took for reason, responsibility, and patience in moving our city forward in a positive manner for community service, not self-service. But really, the issues that were brought before you in regards to the Government Study Commission came out after the fact, in comments that were made after the vote was taken, in threats and comments to people on council and elsewhere throughout this community. The woodpile, so to speak, really became apparent. The true agenda to defund or underfund the police within the ordinance or the ordinance itself that was created really not as a Government Study Commission at all, but nothing more than moving our form of government from the present form to a Home Rule form. Now, was that really a Government Study Commission? Was that really what was intended by the people who came in from the state? And I attended that meeting and was there to hear what they had to say about, if it's a Government Study Commission, looking at other forms of government, you truly have to look at all of those forms. Local option sales tax, metro government, Home Rule Charter, as it was proposed to be set to be undertaking, and also keeping the same form of government, if that's what is working. If it's not broke, don't fix it. If we're truly not going to undertake something that's going to benefit the taxpayers of the city of Erie, if this is just fodder to get their votes for an agenda of a small few, then we really have to reflect upon ourselves the purpose of what it is that we're here to do. As I've said many, many times, it's about community service, not self-service. The job that you do many times is thankless, hard, long hours, hard work. And I know that many of you do that for the benefit and the betterment of our community. If we truly want to continue to move in that direction, we have to move in a slow and deliberative manner. Take the recommendations for sure of the experts, particularly from the state, who would come in and help underwrite and undertake this endeavor with us as a partnership. And we certainly have to make sure that we can do it in a financially, fiscally responsible and accountable way. We have to make sure the money is there in the budget or that there's grants available to potentially underwrite it. But to undertake an endeavor at the whim of the few to not benefit the many would certainly not be the avenue I would expect these council members that care about our city to take. And so once again, I applaud the vote that you took. I know it was difficult and courageous, but you've stood up for the people of this community and they, as I, appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for public comment?
Good morning, city council. I apologize if it's hard to hear me. I'm a little under the weather. My name is Marty Wachuku. I want to read a quote that a lot of us know by Martin Ni Moller, who was a Lutheran minister during Nazi Germany, who spent the last few years in the prison camps. He is best known for saying, "First, they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unions, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me." The reason I bring up this quote today is because I am a Nigerian-American. I am an immigrant. And even though I'm a naturalized citizen, there are a lot of people in our community right now not feeling safe because of the current administration's community right now not feeling safe because of the current administration's attacks on migrants and new Americans. You may think, well, oh, they're illegal, they've done crimes, they've done A, B, and C. No one is safe from these raids. And I wanted just to take this time here to share that for the general public, people in the community love you, we care about you, we want to know that you're safe, and they also ask City Council and the mayor's administration to be really clear about what their policies are in protecting that marginalized community. Because even though it's the brown Puerto Ricans, Mexicans, and all the people that they're targeting right now, they soon will come for the Africans, they'll soon come for the Ukrainians, they'll come for everyone. And it's important for us to speak up now before it comes to that point. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll move on.
Council file ordinance 16496, official ordinance 72025, and ordinance appropriating the sum of $100,000 to be received from the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency, PHFA, and made available through the Pennsylvania Housing Affordability and Rehabilitation Enhancement Fund, which is fair. The funding will be utilized to provide grants to low and moderate income owner occupants for repairs and improvements to their homes, sponsored by Councilmember Shaw, seconded by Councilmember Titus. The council file bill number 16496 and now known as official file ordinance 72025 be finally passed by City Council. Members Brazinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Troop, and Titus. City Council pass official file ordinance 72025 by yea six nay zero. Council file number 16497, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $1 million from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof for a $1 million grant from the Department of Justice, BJA-FY24, encouraging innovation program for auto theft enforcement and protection, prevention, sponsored by Councilmember Brazinski, seconded by Councilmember Shaw. The council file ordinance bill number 16497 and now known as official file ordinance 82025 be finally passed by City Council. Members Brazinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Troop, Titus. City Council pass official file ordinance 82025 finally by yea six nay zero. Council file number 16498, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $81,889 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof for an $81,889 grant from the Department of Justice, fiscal year 24 JAG program, local solicitation for police equipment, sponsored by Councilmember Brazinski, seconded by Councilmember Shaw. The council file ordinance bill number 16498 and now known as official file ordinance 92025 be finally passed by City Council. Members Brazinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Troop, Titus. City Council pass official file ordinance 92025 finally by yea six nay zero. Council file number 16499, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $1 million from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof from the city of Erie ARP fund interest and will be used to fund the capital improvement fund, sponsored by Councilmember Nelson, seconded by Councilmember Shaw. The council file ordinance bill number 16499 and now known as official file ordinance 102025 be finally passed by City Council. Members Brazinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop. City Council pass official file ordinance 102025 finally by yea six nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council file number 16500, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $15,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. This contribution is from the Mercy Terrace Apartments for use by the Bureau of Police, Fire, and Streets. Sponsored by Councilmember Shaw, seconded by Councilmember Troop. The council file ordinance number 16500, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brazinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop. City Council pass official file ordinance, oh, it's not, 16500 by yea six nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16501, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $200,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from Pennsylvania State 902 Recycling Grant and providing for the expenditure thereof. Sponsored by Councilmember Titus, seconded by Councilmember Flores. The council file ordinance number 16501 have been read as hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brazinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Troop, and Titus. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance 16501 by yea six nay zero on first reading. Vice President Titus, this takes us to new business.
At this point, I'd like to request a motion and a second to move the balance of the agenda.
Second.
Any separations? No separations, sorry.
Are you sure?
I'll have one. For number one on new business.
Thank you.
Any other separations? Voting on moving the balance of the agenda, members Brazinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. Number one in new business, sponsored by Councilmember Shaw, seconded by Councilmember Troop. That Erie City Councilmember Kathleen Shaw appoints Taiwan Tyree Taylor, Sr. of 843 East Sixth Street, Erie, to the Blight Property Review Commission, BPRC, for a two-year term expiring January 31st, 2027. Discussion?
Yes, I just want to say that I thank Taiwan Tyree Taylor, Sr., who stepped up to this position that is much needed. People on these commissions, they do not get paid, it's all volunteer. So he's going to be taking time out of his day to be faithfully at the meeting and play an important part for the Blighted Property Review Commission. They can't do business without their committee members. So it's important that I wanted to recognize people who are doing this for our city, that there's so many people on different boards and commissions that are not being paid, it's all volunteer, but they're giving their heart and it's much needed. Thank you very much.
Voting on the resolution, members Brazinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, Troop, and Titus. Resolution passes yea six nay zero. Vice President Titus, this takes us to committee reports.
Wonderful, thank you. Ms. Shaw, will you go ahead and we'll start on your side this time?
Sure, thank you, Doctor. So yesterday, I was at the Warner Theater for the Erie Downtown Partnerships Annual Event Report, and I am so geared up for everything that they're doing. They had 130 events this past year with 92,440 people in attendance. They've had over 500-plus program hours and they had 10 new events in 2024. And the average cost per event was $1,425. And there's 200 small businesses, vendors, and independent artists directly engaged in their events. This year, they had a Pay What You Can market and 19 total farmers participated and 7,515 pounds of food. And I just won't go on, but they have a little booklet and I am so very thankful for all they do. It's not just Perry Square. This, they've been in existence now, this is their 21st year. And I remember, you know, going to many events and they have made many wonderful memories for myself and my family. But their ambassadors also helped the community. Yesterday, someone had tripped and fallen on 10th and State Street, so they helped pick the person up and, you know, stop traffic so they could help someone across the street. It's just different things like this, how they reach out and take care of our downtown area. I also attended after that the SPCP, meaning, excuse me, led by Brother D, and he's doing a fantastic job. And I want to thank everyone who shared and goes to those meetings and hopefully will continue to go to those meetings. It's a police-community partnership and definitely needed during these days. And they were talking about the beat cops, but how the PALS program has stepped up and really, truly is a cooperation and the dialogue needs to continue. So I thank Chief Dan Spazarni and everyone who was there and will continue throughout the years. This is, you know, not just the city program. We are actually recognized throughout the nation for this program that we do. So, thank you. I went to the EMTA special meeting that they had on Zoom and the open house for the Mercy Center for Women. You know, I had been to Holy Rosary School for many, many, many years and it's just mind-boggling how a place can be transformed into residence to help our women and families who need this place. And I was able to meet some of the children there and it's just really a wonderful transformation in this part of the city. The artwork in there is just absolutely beautiful, warm, and welcoming. So thank you to Ms. Hagerty and everyone that is involved with the Sisters of Mercy, the House of Mercy. Thank you. There's going to be a sewer meeting at 11:30 for those who can attend on council today. But I also want to really mention about the mobility problem that we have in the wintertime. And I have a friend who is in a mobilized wheelchair and that's how he gets around. And not too long ago, I think it was last week, he got stuck and really had to call like 911 because like his chair is not a light chair, like these mobilized chairs are very, very heavy. So I'm asking and reaching out to all of the businesses that we have on West 26th Street, 10th Street, Peach Street, everywhere. The salt or the ice is a problem as well and the snow, we really need people to step up, really need to do what we can because accessibility for all is needed. So I want to really reach out that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Chair Vice, thank you. So I did want to echo Councilwoman Shaw's words about Taiwan Taylor, I've been knowing him a long time. So he also does a lot of work with youth, having them volunteer and do different things around the community, so I think that was an excellent selection. I wanted to just recognize that February is Black History Month and the person who has kind of started that, his name is Carter G. Woodson. And one of the things he believes that is that we need a history, not really just about one race, but about all people, share the history about all people. I have announcement from the Redevelopment Authority. At our evening meetings, they always have somebody available in the lobby to assist with any questions, application completions, and availability of programs that they offer. And then to finish up, I just wanted to rehash some of the things that I heard from the community. I heard Liz Allen talk about how we can use our city council leadership to amplify things that are going on in our nation. I heard one person talk about tenant education, you know, educating tenants. Talked about, someone talked about the Upper Room. Another person talked about keeping our marginalized people safe and also heard Carl say the word accountable, so just a couple of things I heard from citizens. Thank you, that's it.
Councilor Brazinski?
Thank you, sir. Well done, Mr. Troop, you took a lot of my talks away, so. Listening to what Mr. Troop said, that was pretty good. I do have a couple of comments. I don't know, I guess it's good news, bad news. Seawolves are losing, we're losing our manager Alvarez, which is kind of bad news, but it's good news for him because he's moving up to Toledo, a promotion for doing a great job. Sometimes you wonder about the Peter Principle, the better you do, they push you places where you're not at air anymore. Anyhow, the good news, the second good news is that we're getting Coach Graham back to be our manager. And he did a nice job for a few years before Coach Alvarez was here. So that's one update for the Erie Civic Authority. The other is that Mr. Pine is in conversations with the Board of Directors at the zoo to try to come to some kind of a conclusion and a plan to save our zoo. Basically, I don't want to be melodramatic about it, but it's coming down to that. They are working, Jane Earl, of course, is an integral part of the zoo part of it, so together, those two will be fine. The Port Authority, I guess the biggest thing they're doing is, at the front here, is they're gonna have sessions, and I'll tell you when in a minute, there's flyers out in the lobby for anybody interested, about the Coke plant. There's so much talk about it, most of it is supposition, most people don't even know what's going on, but it's gonna be a meet and greet, they're gonna explain things. The first one is Wednesday, the 19th of February, which is bad timing for us because we have a meeting that night. It's from six to eight at the East Middle School. And the second one will be on February 20th from four to six. I still call it the old Wayne School on Sixth and East Avenue. It's now officially the, if I can get the paper out there.
You can.
Officially called the Arts and Technology, Ms. Devlin runs that one. But it's open to the public, you can come in, have your questions answered, make your comments, because the Coke plant's part of us and probably won't have part of us, and it probably won't have a whole lot to do with me at my age, but down the line, that could really be a huge, huge diamond in the center of the city of Erie. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Councilor Nelson?
None of the authorities that I am liaisoned to met in the last two weeks. Mr. Brzezinski brings up Gus Pine. I spent a little time with him yesterday. He's going to be boxing on February 18th at Knockout Homelessness. It's an event that Ms. Schember's done a couple times in the middle of the ring, and I had the opportunity doing last year, so that's coming up before the next council meeting. We talked about Home Rule Charter again in caucus. We talked about the need for information to get out to the community. Based on the public comments, I think it's particularly important, maybe even more demonstrative as to how important information to the community is so that we don't have inaccurate information by people that are apparently poorly informed. If you were to just simply Google "defund police, home rule charter, Pennsylvania," or any of those combination of words, you will see that no community uses it to defund police. The thing that usually comes out of it is that cities that are under Act 47 and actively having to defund police end up having revenue sources to keep their city services accurate. So the statements of that are completely inaccurate, not based in any information, and easily verified as inaccurate. Also, it also has no bearing on the ability to create a sales tax that's dictated by Act 511. Home Rule Charter is still subjected through Act 114, the preemption laws, that we still can't do a sales tax either. So any of the criticisms you heard of the concept today were ill-informed, as the same person offered ill-informed opinions about it two weeks ago. That's why we have to have study sessions. I recommend people read stuff, and if you offer public comments with information, please use Google ahead of time. Thank you.
Councilor Flores?
Thank you. A lot of my council obligations, we'll be having meetings in the next week or so. I plan to attend the ones that I'm available for. I know there's Zoom options available, and I'm waiting for Jackie Spar, the Director of Planning and Neighborhood Resources, to let me know where she wants me to specifically focus on. I know that they did just have a community session where they were getting information about the subject that Kathy just mentioned. I can't even recall what she said it was. I didn't make it to that meeting because it was at the same time of our evening council meeting, which I want to work better on making sure that we're not scheduling at the same time that we're having city council meetings, because I would like for those council members to be able to go to these events. So that's something that I'm going to try to collaborate going forward. I know that we've had, well, I've specifically had quite a few people reach out to me, speaking on the fear and the panic within our Latino and Hispanic and immigrant community members. I've also had American-born community members who are in fear of these new executive orders. So I do think that the presentation that the community member Liz Allen spoke on, us informing our community on what's going on, is a useful time and a useful bit of information that we could put forward. But I wanted to, you know, comment that I did send out an email to Renee and the mayor and the solicitors, asking what we were going to be doing in response to everything going on in our community. I haven't gotten an email on direct action, so hopefully we do chat soon on what we can do. But I do know that we have a lot of dreamers who were brought here as children, who are educated, college-educated, who are working in a lot of these professional industries because they followed the American dream of working hard, going to school, and actually making sure that your parents' sacrifice of bringing you to a new land was worth that sacrifice. So I just want us to make sure that we're acknowledging that, you know, some of these people are here legally. They've been paying all of the fines and all the regulations to hopefully have a pathway to citizenship. It's just, if you go through any of the immigration process, you know it's a very lengthy process. So, you know, people have been trying to do things right. We have migrant community who, what, they're here legally, they are on work visas, and they're even being targeted. We have people being targeted at their jobs, at children's schools, at churches, at check cashing places. So, you know, all communities have bad apples. All communities have bad people, but we cannot neglect the contributions that the good people make. All right, so what I say is now is the time to organize within your community. Now is the time to build in your community. We have local elections coming up. We have petitions dropping on February 18th. We have our May primary on May 20th. I know that me being half Mexican, half Puerto Rican, my community always wanted to leave things alone. They didn't want to be noticed. They don't want to be a target. But now that they are a target, I'm getting a lot more people who want to do more. So I think we're going to see a lot more community activism going forward, which is great, because if you're not at the table, you're on the table. That's something I've been saying a long time. And I think people seeing how marginalized and how targeted, different pockets of people are starting to become the main focus. People are starting to feel like we have to do something. So my hope is that on the local levels, we can put up a barrier for the outside noise and the hatred and the narrative of the administration, just because we know what Erie is about, and we know what our city stands for. And I'm hopeful that we have more community members who see the good in everyone, because America is a community of immigrants. We come here from all over, and we make our country beautiful, so we can't lose sight of that, even if we have bad apples, because there's a lot of American-born citizens who are bad apples, and they get chances time and time again. So we have to remember that. Everyone deserves due process. Everybody deserves time in front of courts, in front of judges, in front of a jury of your peers. We can't forget the laws and the order that our country was founded on, because some of us only have those laws to count on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Flores. I'll make my report out, brief, and it's going to echo much of what was just said. A majority of the past few weeks has been spent with, speaking with organizing, organization groups, community members, who are living in a constant state of crisis. The unleash of executive orders that we are still trying to navigate has created a surge of fear. That was the intention, that is by design. When we are existing in a state of crisis, it becomes very difficult for us to figure out where to put our energy and how to use our energy, and we become burnt out and we become apathetic. So my request is that we lean in to community, that we lean into the organizations, we lean in to the organizers, and that we trust that there are more who are working with us, alongside us, and on our behalf than there are those who are working against us. Not to dismiss the very real facts of things like freezes being issued on funding, threats being issued around that, the tariffs, and what that will do and the devastation that that will genuinely cause, in addition to undermining civil rights and protections at a mass level. We do have the, the local elections are coming up. I feel like we say this every year, but this truly will be the front line to keeping our community members safe, to doing the most that we can, is those we have in these local positions. So make sure we know what is going to be on our ballot, make sure we know what seats are going to be on the ballot, everything from poll workers to all the way up to retention judge votes and positions. You know, this is a local elections. There's no such thing as an off year, there are odd year, and the odd year elections are the ones that have the most immediate impact, and those will be the things that will keep us and our community safe as we navigate these very unpredictable next few years. I have several authority and liaison position meetings that are also coming up between now and the next few weeks, so I will report out on those. I also want to, again, just take note and acknowledge how important representation is. I think the representation we see up here on council is the most diverse that it's probably ever been, and yet it still doesn't, it doesn't represent the entirety of our community. But I am very proud of who we have up here and the voices that we have in the pockets of the community that we do get to represent. And saying that, knowing that some members are not running for reelection, some members are moving on to other seats to run for, and so that this is, again, another race that is critically important as we move forward and as we pay attention to what's happening at a local, state, and national level. And in closing, I do ask that we just keep our President of Council in our thoughts, and I'm sure he wouldn't mind, you know, some nice words of support and affirmation as he navigates what he is navigating. That concludes my report, and I will go ahead and move over. Do we have a report from the Treasure Controller's Office? Solicitor's Office?
No report.
Administration?
Yes, I'll try to be quick. So last couple of weeks, we've been having stakeholder interviews and public meetings on the HUD five-year consolidated plan, which will cover the time period from 2025 to 2029. We've been getting input from residents. We have shared and will share again to, it's on the city's website, but we'll share it to social media today, a QR code to the survey for anyone who was not able to make it to one of the public sessions, to share their perspective on what the needs are in the community in terms of housing, homelessness, social services, neighborhood, community centers. We like to hear from people because that feedback informs the priorities for the next five years and for this year's annual plan going forward. So we'll be posting about that, hope to get as much input as possible. Also want to reiterate, Black History Month, in honor of that, for those who are interested, this Sunday at City Gallery, Steve Trejoski and his wife Lana Logvina are hosting the Ethnic Heritage Ensemble live at 3:30 for those who are able to attend. I know it'll be a wonderful event. It brings a lot of good people together to celebrate Black History Month. We're also going to be doing our showcases as we have for the last six years on social media about all the contributions that our African-American and Black residents have accomplished over the last several decades to highlight those. The, we're currently engaged in several plans. I just wanted to, we're in different stages. I just wanted to provide a quick update. We're nearing completion on the Safe Streets and Roads for All Plan. We're about to begin, finally, the Comprehensive Parks Recreation and Open Spaces Plan, and we are working with the county on interviewing consultants for the comprehensive housing strategy that will be countywide. So that's all really good stuff that's going to help us with implementation going forward and being able to get additional grants to make those initiatives a reality. And then finally, I just wanted to say, PennDOT put the word out yesterday that the light at Cranberry and Bayfront Parkway will start flashing today, and after about three days, will be completely operational. That, those things take a long time. You need traffic studies to make sure that a light is warranted, and we want to thank all the residents who provided input, and we're excited that that's finally coming to fruition. That's it.
Before we conclude, the mayor's office had to release a statement just around the positioning with some of the calls and concerns that we've received. I was just wondering if you could just reiterate to this office, just the mayor's stance around ICE and that approach, just with, we have a new audience with that.
Sure. What the mayor communicated is that the Immigration Naturalization Services are not working, the Erie Police Department is not working with them, the city of Erie is not working with them. We, the city of Erie Police Department does not enforce expired visas or anything like that. Our concern is for the safety and protection of our residents, all of our residents. If there is ever a situation, and historically, our local police cooperate with state and federal agencies if there is a violent criminal that needs to be apprehended. That is something that they would assist with to protect our residents. But there's no cooperation going on. We don't know of any planned sweeps. We haven't been able to verify that there was a sweep. In fact, I believe that some of the rumors that were circulating were found not to be accurate, and so we want to make sure that when something happens, we're getting the word out about it factually. We want to, we want everybody to feel safe here and welcome here. We're a welcoming community, certified as such through Welcoming America, and we intend here locally to continue with that.
Good. Thank you.
Yep.
Good.
Excuse me. Nice job.
Just want to announce there will be a finance meeting closing the following of the city council meeting. And albeit that, all right, this concludes our city council meeting.
City Council adjourns at 10:00 AM. Members Titus, Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Shaw, and Troop.